Good evening. We now call this meeting to order. If you could please pay attention to Councilwoman Duncan for the invocation to be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. And if you're in the chamber or at home, please rise if you are able.
Good evening. Thank you. It's Episcopal Church Volume 2.0. Last week I had someone from my district. As I said, I'm a life cradle Episcopalian, so I invited someone from my district. And this time it's someone from the diocese. This evening we have with us Father Patrick Funston, who recently moved to Topeka to serve as the Canon to the Ordinary for the Episcopal Diocese of Kansas. As Canon, he will serve as Chief Counselor to Bishop Kathleen Bascom and support the ministry of clergy in parishes throughout the diocese. Patrick, who grew up in Overland Park, is married to Michael, a native Topekan, and they live in Westboro with their two children. Before moving to Topeka, the family lived in Manhattan, Lawrence, and Alexandria, Virginia. I'm very glad you could be here this evening. It's yours. Let us pray. Sovereign God, Source of all that is good and noble and true, pour out your Spirit upon those who take counsel this evening in Topeka, and especially upon this mayor and city council. That in serving your people, they may serve your purpose, which is humanity bound together in pure affection. In the name of your Son, our Lord Jesus Christ, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now proceed with the roll call.
Mayor De La Isla?
Here.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Here.
Valdivia Alcara?
Here.
Ortiz?
Here.
Emerson?
Padilla?
Here.
Nager?
Here.
Dobler?
Here.
Duncan?
Here.
And Lesser?
Here.
We have nine present.
We have nine present. I spoke with Deputy Mayor this evening. He is hanging in there, but he will not be with us tonight. I figured that everybody wanted to know that he was hanging in there. Our thoughts and prayers are with him. We now proceed to proclamation. We have three votes on camera. My dear friend Bill Persinger, today is, we are celebrating the proclamation of Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. And I will first read the proclamation for everybody, but then after I read it, I will recognize Bill Persinger so that he gets an opportunity to recognize those who are there to celebrate and commemorate this time with him. And then he'll say a few words. The proclamation states that whereas good mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas services are accessible and affordable for those in need in Topeka in Shawnee County, Kansas, and whereas treatment for those individuals with mental health conditioners can recover and lead full, productive lives, and persons in the racial minority population have additional mental health challenges such as, for example, social determinants of health related to the neighborhoods or community where one lives, language and cultural barriers between providers and consumers, and the effect of chronic stress related to discrimination, and whereas there are significant disparities that place persons in the racial minority population at a greater risk for serious mental health problems such as, for example, higher risk of suicide, reports of serious psychological distress, and whereas each business and government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen can, through their proactive individual and collective actions, promote good mental health and recovery for persons in the racial minority population. I, Michelle De La Isla, Mayor of the City of Topeka, Kansas, now hereby proclaim the month of June, of July 2020 as Minority Mental Health Awareness Month. Bill, would you like to say a few words?
Madam Mayor, we thank you very much from the bottom of our hearts for stepping forward and showing the progressive and forward-thinking nature of Topeka. And I know that, you know, Shawnee County as well is well represented in many of our partnerships. I want to say thank you for the proclamation. We will frame this and display it in a prominent place, but more importantly, we'll make sure it's part of our culture here at Vallejo. And with those very few words, let me turn it over to Frank Henderson, who is the immediate past Chair of the Vallejo Behavioral Health Governing Board. He'll acknowledge some other Vallejo folks here, and then he'll have a few words for you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Bill. Mayor De La Isla, thank you very much for your timely proclamation at a time where minorities are indeed disproportionately impacted by COVID-19 layoffs and anxieties from the recent killings of people of color. And major depression factors associated with depression are more pressing and frequent among members of minority groups than among whites. So thank you very much for your timely proclamation. We do have several folks from Vallejo here, staff and board members. And I'd like to ask if they would introduce themselves, please, at this time.
Hello, I'm Kristin Stock, and I'm Program Manager for Supporting Apartment Services. And I just really appreciate this awareness for minority mental health, and think it's going to do wonders for, if anything, to help with the stigma within the cultural communities. So, thank you.
I see Amy there as well.
My name is George Blackwood, and I apologize for my speakers not looking right. I'm on the Foundation Board. And again, I echo what Kristin said. This is a great honor, and I appreciate the awareness Topeka has taken.
Hi, my name is Amy Capasty, and I work at Vallejo, and I'm the Development Director there. And thank you. This is our third year that we've had this proclamation, and we're very appreciative, especially this year, because I think this year it means more than ever to our community, and it's a national, huge national issue. So thank you for helping us shine a light on that.
Okay, anybody else, Bill?
Verlisa, are you there?
Yes, sir, I'm here. Sorry, you all, my internet's in and out, but I am here. I'm Verlisa Cradle. I'm a board member, newly board member at Vallejo Behavioral Health. Super excited. It's a great honor and pleasure to be here on this day. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Mayor De La Isla, for this opportunity and for us to continue to give our community knowledge and let them know that they do matter.
Well, thank you, and I would be remiss. Yeah, Frank?
Oh, I just want to thank you for your leadership that you continually have provided us with our city year after year, and you are to be commended for being a leader that is caring, knowledgeable, and makes sure things get taken care of. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Frank. It's a team effort. It's not a body of one, it's a body of 10, but thank you. I think I would be remiss, especially in this time, if I were not taking the opportunity to tell everybody that's watching, today was a hard day. And then the last few weeks have been very hard few weeks. We've had losses in our community today, heightened stress today, as we had another incident later on this afternoon. We're carrying through the losses of black lives across the nation that have really shaken the core of who we are. And even at this council last week, we had a two-hour conversation with regards to things that we're trying to talk about so that we could get to a better place and create systemic change. What I want to make sure that all of you here is, a few weeks ago, I was pretty transparent. I'm not okay. And it's okay for you to say you're not okay. What I want you all to understand is that in Vallejo, you have a partner. You have individuals that regardless of your ability to pay, will be there for you, will take care of you, and will provide you the support that you need, regardless of your ethnicity, of your gender. You're not going to be asked anything that is going to compromise you. These are amazing individuals. I have seen them work firsthand with a member of my family. They have been my partners for so long, helping with this individual, and I am so ever grateful for them in our community. And if your mayor is willing to trust a family member to them, maybe you should too. So thank you all for all the work that you all do, and that also goes for the young people and for those parents who are of minority backgrounds. Remember that you have Family Service and Guidance Center as well, and they are amazing. There is no shame in asking for help. We all need help once in a while. Thank you, Bill, for everything that you do.
Thank you, Mayor. Well said. And, you know, I think that your proclamation and the support of the city will break down one of those barriers, and that's access to care. And already here at Vallejo, nearly 20% of our clients are represented as in a racial minority, and we want to even see that, make sure that number is proportionate to our community, that no one has a barrier. And thanks to you folks, we're going to get there. We are getting there. Thank you.
All right. Now we move on to presentations. City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, to do the introduction related to the SBCP program, is Chief Cochran. So Chief Cochran, come to the microphone, and his staff will be giving a presentation on the Strengthening Community Partnership Program. Chief?
Thank you, City Manager, Mayor, Council. Thanks for the opportunity. Tonight, we've been asked to give an update on the SBCP and where it stands. Again, this is a program, if you remember, started back in 2018 in the spring, and we're only the second city in the nation who's done a program like this. And we're very excited that the program is continuing and it's thriving and all that. So with that being said, I'll turn it over to our project manager who has the SBCP program, and that's Captain Colleen Stewart.
Good evening. Again, my name is Colleen Stewart. I am a captain with the Police Department. I've brought with me another member of the SBCP who will also be speaking, and I'll let him introduce himself.
Hi, my name is Sergeant Nichols. I'm one of the members and founding members on the council.
So we just wanted to tonight bring some background, how this program came to Topeka, what occurred when it did come to Topeka, and what this group has done, which is a tremendous amount of impact that they've had since they've come to be. In late 2017, at that time, Major Cochran had reached out to the Department of Justice about a program called SPCP, or Strengthening Police and Community Partnerships. And that was due to some rising tensions between the police and community that came out of an officer-involved shooting. When he was appointed as permanent chief in January of 2018, he went back to the Department of Justice and said, "We need to bring this program here. We need to have something in place to bring community and police back together, to have that foundational understanding of one another and to get to that healing side of it." So the DOJ did come to us here in Topeka, and there was a planning committee that came in to be in January of 2018, I'm sorry, February of 2018. That planning group included key leaders in our community, and those leaders identified other groups and individuals that should be involved in this type of program. And as they progressed in the planning, they identified some people that would be good breakout facilitators to provide this training. This training took place in June of 2018. Over 100 people were in attendance, and that was a mixture of community members and law enforcement. And together, they participated and worked together to identify some major concerns. They prioritized those concerns, and the group, ever since that point, has worked towards implementing solutions towards those concerns. It's what I would call a conduit of change. They really have made an impact on how our agency performs and some programs that we have within our agency. I am the newest person to the SPCP, having only been here for about a month, so I won't take their glory. I had absolutely nothing to do with that. That's what Staff Sergeant Nichols is going to talk about. But I did want to just give a brief background on it. They did, as a group, come to five prioritized topics and issues, and those were broad community issues. They wanted to enhance understanding between the police and the community. They wanted to enhance the ability to communicate issues and address them. They wanted communication and transparency in that communication, dialoguing with the community. The group wanted to see more diversity in the police department. Community trust was in the top five of those prioritized concerns. And then, of course, dealing with bias and racial bias. How would the agency go forward and deal with that? And with that, Staff Sergeant, I'll hand it over to you.
Hello, how you doing? Kenneth Nichols again. So with that being said, a lot of the stuff that SBC talked about was taken in, and it was actually implemented. And the Chief of Police actually listened to a lot of the comments and stuff. We've seen a lot of it used in the riots, not the riots, but the protests that we had outside of Targets, when the officers were actually getting inside and talking to them one-on-one instead of being on the outskirts looking with force. They actually listened when those people said that. Also, June 28th, we had an event, which the program, they talked about diversifying the police force, where we were talking about the stipulations with recruiting. The Chief also took that into accommodation and started lowering some of the standards so that we could get qualified people from the community to come up and start being officers in the community. We had a lot of open, a lot of meetings with the community going around through the different districts and talking to them and giving them a lot of the things and listening to the feedbacks and taking it back and doing it. They also opened up a lot of their agendas, their SOPs to us, so that we could see them online, and that helped out with the community, too. A lot of focal points that were talked about was having somebody that was a buffer between the police department and the city council, which we came up with, which is Ed Colazo, the liaison between all of them. That was also something that was talked about in that meeting. So a lot of things that we are sitting up here talking about, and the group started out with and made those goals, they were accomplished. And it is doing a great thing for the community, because we are actually seeing a lot of people coming to talk to us. We're planning on moving forward with other things, with like pop-ups in the community where we'll sit down and talk to those people and the kids and getting the kids to interact with it. I guess that was like really, oh, and then we talked about some of the things with the GPS systems, and those were turned on, and a lot of the feedback that the community was doing. We, like they said, we were selected from the hand group of people that was selected to go to Washburn and attend that, and we actually took everything that those, that everybody from the community wanted, even in the troubled areas, and we put that into play. We actually talked about it. We had long meetings, hours and hours of deliberation on what was wrong and how we could fix it. It wasn't just pointing the finger, it was us working together like we, like the, like the program was meant to be. And the community relations is going great. Everybody knows that it takes a process to get it done. Our first phase of it is going great. We're moving forward, and we're hoping to keep it going all the way past that. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Councilwoman Valdivia Alcara?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have, I know that I had asked the Chief for this presentation, and I really appreciate it because it's very enlightening, but do we have any information that has when the community, when SPCP went out into the different zones or different districts, what the attendance of the public was at those meetings?
I do not have that on hand.
Does somebody track that?
The attendance at the meetings was varied. Some of them, there was pretty good turnout, like up at your district, there was pretty good turnout. And then District, what's your district, District Cake, sorry about that, Councilman. District Cake had a really good turnout, and then Seven as well. Some of the others, it was lower. And there was a lot of conversation as to, was it not put out well enough? Was it not media put out enough or whatever? I can tell you that we did a lot of efforts on putting the information out. The hopes are that we can rejuvenate and get some more people involved, and that's where we're heading when we go into '21.
Okay, I would like counter that there was good attendance at Oakland, because when you count the number, which is part of my district, because when you count the number of law enforcement there and media that work with law enforcement, I think there was seven, then if you count the pastor that was there who was having it at his church, then you count Luis, who was the SPCP representative, and then you count me, who was, I was a candidate at the time. I think that there was three other people there. And I think that we really did have some much-needed conversation about, you know, it's more than coming into a community and the more creative ways of reaching out and getting the word out, especially to folks that we say over and over, that don't have access to the internet, that are older folks, and younger folks that, you know, are always a challenge to reach, I think. So I would say it was mixed success in District Two, and, you know, we'll see what the future holds. I did also want to ask, when you talk about the goals, the topics, issues, my thought about this is that this was an outgrowth, perhaps, of the meetings that occurred at the library after the Dominique White shooting? And I am wondering, was the topic never brought up about excessive use of police force as one of these topics? I mean, I don't see it on here, but I know that that was talked a lot about at those meetings, those initial meetings with, that were held at the library.
Well, those that held at the library were not SBCP meetings.
I know they weren't.
And so the conversations that were held at the SBCP came out of the joint meeting that was held in June. And so whatever topics came out of there, those were the topics. So excessive force, if it wasn't on the list, then it wasn't the topic that came out of there. It wasn't viewed as an issue, I suppose, at that time.
And how do you feel the SPCP has really helped the relationship between the average neighbor and their interaction with Topeka police force?
Well, I think it's helped because it's another line of communication. We have things, we put things out, we can't make people attend, and we can't make people come. And so when you talk about putting the information out there, we did a lot of different things, and you're right. Maybe that particular population doesn't get on the internet and stuff like that. But, you know, there are limited resources in what all we can do and who all we can touch. And so one of the things that we ask SBCP members is to, you know, try to champion the cause when you're out and about and talk about it. So where I think the SBCP council as a whole has helped is it has opened up the line of communications. It's given another line of communication available to people, and we have SBCP members that are made up by the community, that are out in the community, and hopefully they have conversations about it. And so I think where it helps is it's just another line, another opportunity. You know, it's one of those things that I suppose if the council doesn't want the SBCP, we can make the SBCP go away. It doesn't cost anything. It's another community effort that, you know, we're trying to put in play. And so it's also one of those things that if it's something the council doesn't seem necessary or viable, we can...
I'm only one person here, Chief. I mean, so I don't think that, and I'm, and my questions are asked for transparency. And what I really meant is not about the ways to get the words out. I mean, how do you believe the SBCP, with what it is doing, has enhanced the relation, the everyday relationship when the TPD gets a call about something going on, whether it be gunshots in a neighborhood, whether it be having problems, seeing somebody prowling around their house, the relationship of dialogue? I mean, do you believe that it's more beneficial for citizens that actually go to the SPCP meeting themselves, or is it also beneficial for what the police learn there, what they're hearing, and then when they go out into community with, to deal with folks that may not always be able to attend these meetings? That was my question.
Well, I think it's, I think it's both. We learn a lot when we interact with citizens. And one of my biggest things, or one of my biggest focuses, is how do we get down to the grassroots individuals? Not people that say they speak for whatever or whoever, but those individuals that are day in and day out, trying to survive, go to work, and all that other stuff. Those are the people that we really, that I would really like to try to touch. And that's why we have an SBCP, we have an email address and all that other stuff, so if you can't make it to a meeting and you have an issue that comes up, it's another avenue in which you can express concerns to other citizens that are a member of the Board that then can bring that forward when we have a meeting, or they can send me an email or whatever. And so it's twofold. We learn a lot. We learn a tremendous amount from interacting with the public and having those one-on-one conversations. But I think it's also good that it is another avenue for the citizens. And you're right, and that's why some people can't attend a meeting in the evening. And that was one of the things that when we were doing our last quarterly summit, we had individuals out at High Crest say, "Hey, can you do it over lunch hour?" And so going forward, one of the things we were doing is doing some in the afternoon or over lunch hour, two in the after, lunch hour, and then two in the evening, because you do have elderly people that don't want to get out at night and in the dark. And that's what that individual specifically said, you know, "I don't like getting out at night. I had to have somebody pick me up, drop me off, then either waiting here until we're done." And so, yeah, it's very important we hear from those individuals.
Okay, thank you, Chief.
Councilwoman Duncan has been patiently waiting as well.
I just have a quick comment and then a quick question. My comment would be, the district date, there was a meeting, and it was, it was well-attended. And I think, I think one of the benefits of that meeting, my district only has one NIA. And so while the police department's actively involved in that NIA, folks don't always feel either comfortable coming to that meeting if they don't really live in that little area, or, or, you know, just kind of out of place. So it was nice to have a meeting in the district that anyone who lived in that area could attend, regardless of if they were, and so I did appreciate that, and some great resources came out of that. My question is, I saw in the packet that one of the areas of improvement, the future improvements was, you said, made a comment about seeing a drop-off in youth involvement from the start, and that you're focused. Can you just talk about what factors may have contributed to that and what the, what the hope or goal is to kind of fix that moving forward?
So with that, you can think about a lot of factors, you know? School got out, COVID came on, youth sports are going out. So those are all big factors, you know? Not being able to see those people, social distancing, those are factors that come in. Being able to get back into the schools and seeing those people and getting those kids back, interacted with the group, or also interacted with the people that are part of that group. With your comment, we did see a lot of stuff turn off. We were talking to people. A lot of people don't like going to talk to officers straight up. They end up coming to people that they trust. That's why we were kind of picked to be that buffer. So we talked to them, and we go back and report it to these, to the officers or to the Chief or to other officers that we trust. So, I mean, in that whole interaction, it's, like I said, it's a growing process. We can't do, we can't just go automatically full out and think that it's going to work right away. It's going to take time. We have to build that trust and relationship, and we have to get back in there and start fighting. It's going to be hard because of social distancing. COVID-19 has put a big dent in us being able to go out to the communities and talk more to them, and also be there as those representatives that were elected by the people that went to Washburn on that day. So we're still struggling, and we're still fighting, but we're making it happen, even with the incident that happened with, over, what was that, the knee, Jersey? The one that was accidentally killed, he had the knee on the neck. With that, yes, ma'am, that was...
George Floyd.
George Floyd, thank you. That was one big thing. We talked to kids. We're out there seeing it. Me and CJ were talking to kids out in the community, seeing what their thoughts was on that, making sure they had calmed down. We were making sure that other people were calmed down about that. We were that buffer zone. And then seeing TPD take what we talked about in that big group meeting was big. Being able to go inside the crowd and talk to them and see what they are feeling inside their crowd, that was something that surprised all of us, when you see three officers in a big old crowd not fiddling with their belts or anything like that. That's out of their comfort zone. But they were in there talking, being respectful and understanding that. That bias training, they, we're succeeding that. The state requires, what, one hour of bias training? They're going to eight hours of it. Those are things that we brought up into those meetings. So we're doing, the group itself is helping and is making those moves that we need to make, but like I said, it takes time. COVID hit us hard, and we can't get out there in the community and do what we want to do. We do need to recruit more younger people into the group. We do need to bring them in and show them, anybody out there that we know, you can send them to our... talking, being respectful and understanding that. That bias training, they, we're succeeding, that the state requires, what, one hour of bias training? They're going to eight hours of it. Those are things that we brought up into those meetings. So we're doing, the group itself is, is helping and is making those moves that we need to make. But like I said, it takes time. COVID hit us hard, and we can't get out there in the community and do what we want to do. We do need to recruit more younger people into the group. We do need to bring them in and show them, anybody out there that we know, you can send them to our group, and they can come to the meetings and help put in on that. So we can make Topeka great again and be that capital that everybody's known for, that knows around the US.
Additional questions? Councilwoman Hiller.
Thank you, Mayor. I've got a comment sort of across the table to city manager and chief. I think the point that's been raised, that not everybody wants to go to meetings or wants to go out at night or is on social media, those are all really good ones. With our capacity, with our communications team, maybe having some of those conversations that Sergeant is talking about live on, on Channel Four could, could open up some more opportunities to, to get people engaged. So that was a comment. Then I had a question. This really, this time of racial unrest and conversation and activism has gotten a lot of people talking and looking around, and, and I think for most of us, I'll speak for myself, they're interested in getting involved, and they're kind of looking for where they might fit. The two organizations that come out the most prominently, there's really a third, I suppose, from the city, would be SPCP, directly there at the Police Department, and then the Strategic Leadership Academy that Kane Davis is doing. Could you talk about the difference between the two of those that you're aware of, whoever, whoever the right person would be? And also, I know that Kane just got his academy going and is filling his work groups, but if you could talk also about what the timing is in terms of if somebody thinks they're interested in becoming part of SPCP, is it good timing? What are you looking for, and how do they get hold of you?
I'll touch on some of it. There's, the timing is always on the person. It's not, we don't want to rush anybody into being into that. We don't want to force you to be, we want you to come in and be ready to help the community and help Topeka and help the overall sense of what's going on in Topeka as well. If you see something, we should start fixing it. We need to work from the ground up to fix what's going on. So my answer to that is, whenever you're ready, get ahold of Gretchen at TPD, and tell her you're ready to go to, to one of the meetings, when's the meeting? Or get ahold of one of us, and, or email the SPC mailbox and let us know you want to do it. Whenever you're ready, this is your community. We, we are here to make this community better. When you're ready to step up, you can step up. That's the comment that I have.
So since not everybody knows all the ins and outs of all the phone numbers and people and email addresses, if somebody calls the front desk at 368-9551, will someone there be able to take and, take their name and direct that call?
If they need to contact someone about the SPCP, they're, they're welcome to call me. My number is 368-9451. They can email, is spcp@topeka.org. spcp@topeka.org will come to the group. Of course, on all of our social media platforms, they can message, and that will go straight into our public information officer, who has all the information about SPCP as well. As far as the Strategic Leadership Academy, Chief, you, you know a lot more about that than I. Do you want to speak to that?
Yeah, the Strategic Leadership Academy is run by Kane Davis, and we can get that information out there. He'd be more than happy to have that information out there. And so I think he sent that also in his response to the council, referenced the questions that were had of him and his project. So I don't know his number off the top of my head, but we can definitely put that information out there.
Could you just give a nugget about what the difference is between SPCP and Strategic Leadership Academy, if someone was watching?
Yeah, the Strategic, the Strategic Leadership Academy has nothing to do with the Police Department or the SPCP. The Strategic Leadership Academy is a leadership course that has been put together by Mr. Davis. And the focus of the leadership course is to give individuals of color and minorities an opportunity to get leadership training, and how to interact with CEOs and business owners and directors and stuff like that. But it is a leadership academy. It is a program that he has put together. And then out of that has spun his Community Police Relations, which was one of the projects that the first class did, the second class is picking that up. And it's just an opportunity for them, for his individuals that have been part of that leadership, and citizens as a whole, another avenue to be engaged with the Police Department through his program that has nothing to do with the Police Department, other than we talk and work together to try to make things better.
Thank you.
Additional comments or questions for Chief with regards to SPCP, for those of you who are online?
You've got a question from the audience. Is that...I'm just saying. There is a question in the audience. We don't usually take those by. I don't know if you want to.
That's, that's what I was going to say. I mean, it's, it's, it's a public, is the individual signed up for public comment, that we can address their issues during public comment? I mean, we typically don't restrict, you know, constituents from, from interacting, but typically unless somebody has signed up for public comment, it is not a custom that, that we have this. Ms. Robertson, your, your recommendation as our attorney?
Unless the public comment period process is followed as set forth in the governing body rules, folks cannot publicly comment, particularly during the presentation period. The meeting hasn't even been called. I mean, the call hasn't been taken yet.
The encouragement that I would have for this individual is, if possible, if they can communicate with their council member to ensure that they are able to respond back to them, that would be extremely helpful. Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to encourage that person to write it down and give it to Mr. Kenneth Nichols, who's there, so he can give it right to the chief, as opposed to waiting. That's just another layer, and they're already there. And I feel like they can just write that down, and it can be brought to our attentions. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
I, I was waiting to see if the recommendation that Councilwoman Ortiz did was heated, it was not, so then we, we will move on to the consent agenda.
Oh, it was?
Yes, it was.
Everything's fine.
Yeah, I gave her a piece of paper, and they're handling that right now. Oh, okay, so that's what I was waiting for.
It's all fine.
Humorous silence, I'm sorry, I'm getting pretty amusing. We can all sing.
A is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the 2020 Cruising the Capital Car Show. B is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller granting a cumulus broadcasting an exception to the provisions of City of Topeka Code Section 945-170 concerning noise prohibitions. C is a resolution introduced by Councilmember Karen Hiller approving a special event known as the 99.3 The Eagle Cruise Night 2020. D, our minutes of the regular meeting of July 7, 2020. There's a list of open after-midnight license applications that were sent out this afternoon, and staff is recommending approval.
All right, we have heard the consent agenda. What is the pleasure of the body? Councilwoman Ortiz. So moved. We have a motion by Councilwoman Ortiz, a second by Councilman Dobler. Comments or questions on the consent agenda? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Mayor DeLausso?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akala?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Padilla?
Oh, I couldn't hear. Yes.
Neger?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Lesser is not there.
So we have...
There he is, he's saying yes.
We have nine yess.
Nine, Duncan, one, yes. The consent agenda passes. At, at this time, we move on to the action items. Action item A, if the clerk will read.
A is approval of an amendment to the 2019 Consolidated Action Plan.
The manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Tonight, Cory Wright will give you a quick summary of what that related to the 2019 amendment to the Consolidated Action Plan, and then answer any questions you may have. Cory?
Mayor Governor Nagy, thank you for having me back tonight. Tonight, staff is recommending approval of approximately $1.1 million of CDBG CV, Community Development Block Grants, CV funds, for the mobile testing unit and the small business grants for the community, and an additional $2.1 million for homeless prevention, which would help people with preventing them from getting evicted. Rapid rehousing helps people who are already homeless get into housing. Shelter operations and HMIS activities, which we will not do with these funds. So there's only four categories to use those funds with. So I'll stand for any questions you might have.
Any questions? Councilwoman Valdivia Alca.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Cory, for the information. So once this is, this passes, this money will start being utilized immediately. Is that correct?
We have contracts ready to go out the door tomorrow morning.
Okay. Can you tell me how often we'll be able to get a report? Because what I am interested in seeing is now that the mandates from rental, you know, forbearance and all of this, now that all of these are lifting, to get a sense of how much folks are bleeding in that capacity where they're not able to pay their rent? And would it be something that as the months progress, that you'll be giving us an update here at council, or can I, we can just call you to find out what it's looking like with how the monies are, how fast they're going?
Sure, I'll defer to city manager if he wants us to come back here, or just report to you guys via email. But I will say that all of the money for the ESG funds, which is for our homeless prevention, rapid rehousing, are entered into our homeless management information system. So it is a quick, easy report to let you know how many people we served, including children with those funds, how many households we served. It would be a very easy report to pull and give you that feedback.
And so we are looking then, just so I'm clear, and so we make it clear to the public, this is for rental assistance as well?
Yes.
And have you already been receiving calls, like help calls?
We receive numerous calls a day.
Okay.
Numerous calls.
Okay, thank you.
So I, I do have a question, oh, yes, to the clerk. I've been looking through my email to see if there's anybody else in the public signed up for public comment on this. I, I don't see anything, but if you would be so kind, maybe to email me the most recent list, that way I could call on those individuals. And then in the meantime, Councilwoman Hiller has a question.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two. One, I ended up getting kind of embarrassed about comments about this plan on Saturday at the budget meetings. Could you explain for the good of the order why we are amending a 2019 consolidated plan?
Sure. So it is a little confusing, and we are working with the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Our 2020 plan, which you guys have approved previously back last year, is still pending with HUD, waiting for final appropriations. So those appropriations have just been announced, and we will be getting grant agreements for that. Once those grant agreements are signed by the city manager, then that actual document is submitted in final format to HUD, and then they approve it. So right now, our 2020 plan, even though we're in the 2020 grant year, is still sitting there, waiting to be approved by HUD. So HUD has asked all grantees across the United States to amend their 2019 plan due to that situation. Makes more sense now, right?
Thank you.
Well, it was confusing, because then we thought the 2020 was the next year's plan, and it wasn't. And so, anyway, thank you for that.
You're very welcome.
And second, most of the list of uses that you have are pretty self-evident. They're things we've done before, they're ready to go, as you said. But the one on the business grants is not yet developed. Is that correct to say?
Yes. So the specifics on how we will disperse the money to the small business grants is still being developed. HUD is, we're waiting for guidance. We are also working with other cities on how they're distributing those funds. It will either be for a small business owner that is low to moderate income, or it will be for a small business that employs low to moderate income. So those details on that specific part of the, of the grant process will still be determined as we get more guidance from HUD.
And, and if I can follow up, you were telling me also, I think it was you, that the HUD guidelines, as you understand them so far, are that those funds cannot go to a business that's already gotten some COVID-related...
Yes.
...funding, right? Which makes it a little more challenging.
That is correct. It cannot go to anybody that has, any business that has received COVID funds in any way.
And with that, I'm really excited about that program. I was really overwhelmed by how much money was lined up for it at first, because $800,000 is a lot of money for maybe just 40 businesses. On the other hand, when you look at that, that could be a six months of a startup job for someone, a creative job, or an internship, or, or, you know, it could be some really creative kinds of assistance. I did check with the city manager about, about that subject, and I'm not comfortable approving this consolidated plan amendment with that one wide open at this point. And we didn't want, when I talked to city manager, and you correct me if I'm misstating this, city manager, we didn't really want to have an amendment on the motion for the con plan. And he suggested, and I've got the language for it, when it's the right time, that we, we do a motion prior to the motion on the con plan, and that would say, I would move that the presentation of a fully developed plan for the business grant program would, would be made to the council for, well, I don't think I phrased that very well. Anyway, the presentation of a fully developed plan for the business grant program would be made to the council for approval prior to the 2019 amended consolidated plan business grants being distributed. Just so that, that program plan came to us first.
So I...
City manager, it seems like he would like to respond?
That's fine.
Yeah, what we're looking at here is basically just a motion, a simple motion to say that the staff will present what we have as a plan for the distribution of the money to the businesses. Not, we cannot stop approving this con plan. We need to have it in order to do all the things that we're talking about.
Right.
As Cory stated, we're still in the development of that, and as it relates to the distribution of the money to the businesses. So we can't, we can't hit pause, we need to approve this, but we also realize we owe you some information as to how we're going to distribute this money to the businesses. So we'll present that to you once we know it, so that you can understand how we're going to do it and comment, make suggestions relative to that. So that's really what we're, what I'm looking at, what the intent of Councilwoman Hiller is looking at, is a motion, so. That's correct. I must need to mute. Thank you.
Thank you. You've got a hand with...
Councilwoman Valdivia Alca, pardon me, I was unmuted.
Okay, I'm, thank you, Mayor. I'm just a bit confused. I totally agree with what you're saying, that we need to have more of a plan, and I think it's going to be a huge outreach effort, especially for those that have not received, have not received any funding yet. But I don't understand what we're going to be doing tonight. Can you explain that for me? I'm sorry, city manager, I just don't understand.
If I may, I'll go from what I wrote down when city manager and I were talking, and just explain it. The idea would be that we have approved these uses and these dollar amounts for this money. That's what... amounts for this money. That's what the, the approving the amendment to the plan would be, but that we have a corresponding motion that is internal that says, we're not going to start doing anything with that business program till it's come to the council and has our approval.
Got it.
How's that?
I think that's good.
City attorney?
Wouldn't, wouldn't that be more of a directive as opposed to a motion, just to request that the city manager, you know, ensure that that type of information is provided? I'm just asking a question. I want to make sure that we have that straight, because we're not really taking any action on anything. We're directing the city manager to, to do something that we request, or that you request as a body.
Can, the issue is to get it in the record and make sure that city manager, everybody knows and that process is adhered to. And if that needs to be a motion, that there's a directive from the, from the council to the city manager.
Or it could be a directive, Councilmember Hiller, just that he have this as a presentation, the information's provided to you through a presentation, and you can say a particular month. I don't know what the timeframes are like, but it just suggests, it seems more like a directive, but again, that's, that's whatever the comfort level for the body is.
Well, I really want it to be brought to us in, in time for us to have some back and forth and to approve the program, because it's big and it's, it's, it's going to be different than anything we've done. So I want more than just a presentation after the publicity has already gone out.
City manager?
Well, I think the directive is clear. I don't know that it'd end up being an issue related to, obviously, as I do many things, I seek input from the governing body in order to, and then modify it based on the comments that I receive. There's multiple things that happen in that manner. I guess, you know, the clear intent from Councilwoman Hiller was, is that, that the council will have an opportunity, and the mayor have an opportunity to weigh in on this as to how it's developed. But we, we don't have that done yet, so to even contemplate what you wouldn't like is not known yet. So I think it's best that a directive is fine. You know, the bottom line is telling me that you want me to present something to you, and you want to provide feedback as to whether it's what you want, and take modifications to it if it's not.
Yes, and, and from me, from the body as a whole, not just one at a time, kind of round robin. I mean, not that that might not happen, but I'd like to, I want to see it come back to the whole council. I always learn a lot when I hear other people's comments and so on, and so...
That's fine. I'll, I'll agree to that. That's fine.
Okay, so, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Thank you. I'd like to go ahead and approve it with that, with the understanding of those directives. I, I thank Karen for bringing that up. I know the host program, there was a lot of questions, and we kind of threw it together. But I think this is going to be very important, so that people will understand that this is another process that we have, or another, another, something different. I apologize. I'm, I'm, I'm here mentally, but my heart's not. The young lady, family that got shot was one of my kids. But what I'm trying to say is that this is another program that the city is putting together, and so that they don't think it's the host, because sometimes we have so many things out there that they, they think it's that, and then they're not interested. So with that, I, I would like to make a motion to approve it.
We have a motion for approval. Do we have a second? We have a second by Councilwoman Nagar. Additional comments? And there's nobody signed up for public comment on this issue, correct?
Correct.
Okay, just making sure. Okay, if there is no more questions, I think that the direction is that there is an approval, but with the caveat that any other changes would be brought for the council for approval. If there's no other question, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nag, Nagar?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on what is now B, which is the approval of the 2021 transient guest tax. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, if the clerk would read.
Approval of the 2021 transient guest tax allocations in the amount of $3,351,567.
City manager?
Thank you. I don't have much that I'll add, other than this is a normal process that we follow each year in order to establish the tax holder within the budget. And I will turn it over to the committee chair, Duncan, to discuss anything that he would add to the conversation.
Chair Duncan, the floor is yours.
So I'm going to take a brief point of privilege and backtrack for a second. I actually emailed this request earlier. We, we just skipped over something that's been on our agenda for two weeks, and I want to make a very brief comment about that, and it's in regard to no-knock warrants, an ordinance that I put forth a while back, is being moved to next week. And I wanted to make it clear that was not at my request. That was a request of staff. While I was a little reticent to do so, I understood their concerns and, and questions, and they wanted to gather some information, and I wanted to respect that part of the process. What I just wanted to say was, I'm just disappointed we're not taking that vote this evening. I publicly stated at this, one of these meetings that I was going to introduce it. It's been available to the public for over two-plus weeks. We had a discussion on it last week. I have received overwhelmingly supportive comments about it. In fact, I have not received any negative feedback personally on that. But it's being pulled tonight at the request of police union, because they, quite frankly, in the last hour, came forward with some concerns. I'm always open to discussing those with any members of our police force. I have been very supportive of them lately in some various tough times, and I've always been actively supportive of the union. My disappointment is, they had a month to come to me, they had two weeks to read it, they waited till the last minute. I wish they'd spoke. And to this day, no one from the union itself has actually personally reached out and communicated to me any of their concerns. They've done it through staff. I'm easy to get ahold of. I'm at s.duncan@topeka.org, and I'm at 207-8985, and I'd like to have that discussion. But I just wanted the public to understand what was happening, to let them know, I'm not dropping the ball on this, and I hope that we will take it up next week. So with that, I will go on to the transient guest tax. Most of the transient guest tax dollars were decided and the contracts were set before I got here and before others got here. There've been several years in the making, so there wasn't a lot for us to change, as it were. I will say, we wanted the very direct goal, though, of making sure, a few things has been occurring. They are, each group that gets money is to issue a quarterly report. We verified they are turning in those quarterly reports, and they are, have the information they need to have in them. We did have each group that gets money give a presentation to, so we could ask them follow-up questions, again, to make sure the dollars are going directly to where they're supposed to be going to benefit this community, since it is a lot of tax dollars. And we had some very constructive conversations. We felt very confident in all of those groups and what they were doing. Doesn't mean we didn't have questions. It doesn't mean we won't have follow-up. One of the things we will be doing is asking them to take some look at those contracts. We think clerical, there's some clerical issues there we think we can correct, but still ensure those groups get every dollar they were guaranteed. But this year, there won't be extra money, right, if there is such a thing, because of some of the issues, obviously, with COVID. But in the future years, that might free up what we call the, some of those additional dollars to be able to redistribute to other groups in the community. And I told each group that we were going to be looking at that. I will be coming to them and having some of those conversations, and seeing if we can make those adjustments. With that, it was a, it was a three-to vote by the committee to pass this on and get this budget moving forward. And I don't know if Councilmember Padilla or Councilmember Valdivia Akla have anything to add, but if do, go for it.
Are the members of the, of the team anything that they would like to add? Councilman Padilla?
Just a quick comment. And I appreciate Chair Duncan's work with the committee. I think he's taken a very good approach to looking at the transient guest tax. It may seem like it's, oh, maybe asking for too much detail, but in this case, I think it's accurate to ask for that detail. I appreciate the time he and Councilwoman Valdivia Akla has put in to this point. I know that we'll finish out the year, but I think that it's, it's been a good committee to serve with. And I thank him, thank them both for their efforts. Thank you.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alca, I'm sorry, I'm having a heck of a time with that mute button.
Sure. No, thank you, Mayor. I am just going to say this. I'm not going to be able, I'm going to have to abstain on this vote. And I'm not sure quite the verbiage on how to use it, other than there are things that have come up recently that I just believe I should abstain. And I do thank Mike and Spencer for all the work they've done. Thank you.
Thank you. We do have somebody signed up for public comment on this item. It's Mr. Lazon Grace.
He is headed up for mayor.
Can I put my mask down a pair?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone, present and unpresent.
We're all present, so.
I'm speaking from a neutral perspective to a certain degree. I don't understand the dynamics of how these monies came about. But I think, I feel, and I'm only speaking for myself, that considering the time that we are in, not from the COVID, but from the other unrest, that there's a, a value of equity that needs to be addressed right now. Where's the RFP for these dollars? If these are public funds, they should be going out for competitive and public bid. That there should not just be organizations, many, you know, and that I've actually went and looked at their sites. I know within the CDBG funds, they do ask the board for points, that if they have a diverse board. I looked at the entities receiving this. There is no diversity within their staff, their executive staff. I do not want to defray these dollars going to do these things, but I think that the city needs to change its course in not using equity in the way that it distributes funds. That is, if some organizations think that they're going to automatically be guaranteed to get funds just because they step up to the table and ask for it, and some organizations don't even know that the funds are available, because it's not publicized that the funds are available. And so that's, when I look at the listing of what got funded, and I realize, remember, the $2 million that was given away several months ago by JATO, and I see some of the entities here getting a substantial amount of money. They received a substantial amount of money from the $2 million from the JATO, and I'm trying to figure out, how is it, again, as I said then, that there seems to be some projects in Topeka that, once these projects get on the table there, it sucks all the air, all the money, and all the funding opportunities out of the room, whereas these tax dollars are not just given by one ethnic group of people. There needs to be some equity, not just in these fundings, but I look at some of these, you know, that received funding from the, when the interlocal agreement was repassed, the $2 million. Some of them get a lot of contributions, sitting with millions of dollars in the bank. I have respect for the Evel Knievel Museum, and the J-Hop Theater, and the Constitutional Hall. But I have, I know that there are other groups out here that are possibly deserving of at least applying for these funds. I think that equity does not happen, because policies that are in place facilitate a process of exclusion, that people are not known about the monies, that they are not a part of the room where the decisions are being made. And it sort of seems like there's an implicit bias that some organization by people of color is not of worthy and value and merit to those who have the bigger figures and the people of influence and influence on their board. But these are tax dollars for everybody. I did not want to come here and speak to this issue. I got other things to do. I saw this in the Sunday's paper. I could not plan. But I think that as we're moving forward on public funds, because economic inequity is really a big picture of what we are trying to, across the nation, to address, that nothing is going to change from passionate speaking, is going to change from policy. And what is a policy that's going to make sure that these transient guest tax funds are going to be open, fair, and competitive to all organizations? Or is that a process, or is that just a select couple of groups that are going to be able to apply for these funds? Not just these funds, but any city public funds and grants. Because it seems that the same people, the same organizations, are always faithfully getting the same amount of money, whatever they ask for, and other groups who we know, whatever they ask for is recommended zero or less than what they're asking for. Where's the equity in funding?
Mr. Grace, your time has expired. Do you need an extension?
Yes, I please do. Thank you. Yes.
Do we have a motion for an extension? Mr. Grace, how many minutes would you need?
Three is fine.
Okay. Councilwoman Valdivia Alca?
Motion to extend. Three minutes.
Councilwoman Ortiz seconds. If there's no comments or questions, we proceed by voting. Oh, Councilwoman Ortiz.
Motion to extend, how many minutes?
Three. You second. The Councilwoman Valdivia Alca made the motion, you second for three minutes. We now proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nagar?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Nine having voted yes. Mr. Grace, you have three minutes.
Thank you. I think that, I want to believe that it's just an oversight, that this is business as usual. It's how things have always been done. But we are moving to times where business as usual is no good anymore. And things, the way things have always been done needs to end. Because when we look at the city contracting and the wide disparities that are there, when we look at the contracting for social services and the wide disparity that's given there, that now is the time that the city wants to move forward, as you brought Mr. Ruben West here, that Topeka is trying to change. Change is not going to happen if we keep the same old policies in place, keep doing the same things. Now, I have recommendations. You can do nothing and pass it as recommended, as people probably came here to do. I have no problem with the funding, you know. I have a problem with the lack of equity. You can do nothing and pass the recommendations, but future allocation processes will be different. Organizations have to realize that they just can't come and get the money because they show up anymore. This is an era of equity that we're living in and moving in now. You can defer this decision for several weeks to revisit this and come up with something that is equitable? Or you can prepare and pass a city policy and mission statement to assure equity and access to all public funds and contracts, city and JATO should be done. Policy is going to be needed to bring about equity. This is the way that things have been done. You say that it was passed, and that's the way that it's always been done. We need to change how things have been done, because this is what a lot of this movement on breaking down systemic institutionalized actions are all about. Giving these monies away in most cities have become systemic and institutionalized. There are groups that expect to be funded. And when I look at their city maps, health maps, and see zones that are pink and red that never change, I ask myself, why are the same groups getting money and the situation is not changing? I guess I just have questions. I hope the process changed. I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Grace.
If there's any questions, I would entertain.
Councilwoman Valdivia Alca?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't ever think I've met you in person, sir, but would you be, like, open to saying what some of those other businesses, organizations, that you believe would have benefited from this money? I'm, I'm curious, because, I'm curious.
Okay. When you submit a RFP out there, you don't know what businesses are going to apply. I know a few. I'm not going to name them out by name, because I don't have the right to do that. But they are bringing in, and they're doing events that are bringing in people from Manhattan, and Lawrence, and Kansas City, if that's what the intent of it is. They may not be as large and huge. Maybe you have to de-segment, segregate some of those monies for those other upcoming groups, so that they can be a part of these things just as well. I don't, I, I'm not going to divulge the name of organizations that I know that have always, that have applied. They say no, they've just given up.
Well, certainly.
But on an RFP, excuse me, ma'am, on an RFP basis, you may be surprised of the groups that come forward with ideas and different things to do. The people who come and stay in these hotels are not just of one ethnic group. Other groups are bringing people, and this is where the transient guest tax is. And if I look at the boards of directors of the companies that's receiving, organizations, nonprofits, not non-qualitative governmental organizations, then I believe that there should be some open, fair, and competitiveness on public funds. I just stick to that mantra.
Right. And I would have a tendency to agree with you. I run a small nonprofit, and we have definitely put heads on beds.
Mm-hmm.
But we've never applied for the money. I mean, that was back before I was a councilperson, but I definitely hear what you're, definitely hear what you're saying.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Hiller?
Thank you, Mayor. Lazon, I always love it when you come up, you know that. You're a little off the mark on this one in terms of timing, in that, and I'll defer back to the committee on that, but we used to do, the council, we used to do small grants all the time on this, and about five years ago, there was, what emerged out of the then group was, we should target this and really help to bring up some big attractions. And so they voted to put, basically, it's divided up, and other people can explain that, but all of the, basically, all the money into four, either 10 or 12-year grants, to really get some attractions up and going. And what Councilman Duncan was talking about earlier, which I really support, is if there's a way, and what, the way the contracts were done was that each of the four got X percent of whatever money came in that year, which meant there would never be any left over for 12 years. And I, if I understand correctly, the committee is talking about doing exactly what you're, as close as they could to what you're suggesting, in that if the, those contracts can be renegotiated at least slightly, so they're fixed amounts of money every year, and then if there's extra, it can go into some small grants for events and so on. Again, I certainly support that. I think that's what I heard. Also, though, if you do have events within this, the Visitors Bureau does have an event, attraction fund, and so anybody that's got a strong event can go to the, to visit Topeka directly and see about underwriting for that event. So, as much as this will allow that, we're going to have to wait some years, given that decision that was made a few years ago. Otherwise, you know, certainly, I support your point. I do think, just in terms of the council overall, that the $3 million we just voted for is probably going to go more than 30% to minority individuals and families.
I don't know, I don't believe that.
It's a good point, overall, that's why I brought it up. I mean, and I chair the Social Services Grants Committee, which is going to meet tomorrow morning, and we do have that participation requirement. So, I think there are some efforts under the way, but I think it's always good to be reminded, and you always do a good job of that.
And I appreciate your comment, that, again, states that this is something that happened years ago, the way that is broken down.
Understood.
And this is the type of process that needs to be broken up. These are public funds. Are you going to give grants to people for 10 years at a time?
No, they were competitive at the time. They were competitive at the time.
Competitive, and do you have no problem with the monies, the public funds, that everybody pays going to groups that don't share the same values of diversity and inclusion on staff and contracting with women and minority businesses? I think this is a great moment to change.
Thank you, Mr. Grace, for your comments. I can assure you that your remarks are, as usual, taken very seriously, and I appreciate you making time to speak with us today.
Thank you.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make one clarification that everybody should be aware of, but we put together in the new agenda a modified amount that will be going out to the various organizations. We upped the amount of expected revenue to receive from, it was different than the amount that was originally proposed for this in the budget book, and so there is additional funding. Wanted to make sure that if we did have a good year with TGT money, that we were able to capture all of it and go to those organizations. Those organizations ultimately have a set dollar amount that they receive, and so we would allow them to make further progression towards that final dollar amount, based on the way the awards were given years ago on those long-term contracts.
Thank you, City Manager. Additional comments or questions from the body? Seeing none, we proceed by voting.
Need a motion.
Oh, pardon me. Chair, would you like to make a motion?
Yeah, move to approve.
Do we have a second? Councilwoman Valdivia, seconds? At this point in time, if there's no additional questions?
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have eight yeses with one abstention.
And having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the next item with the clerk of three.
See is establishing a public hearing date of July 28, 2020, for the purpose of hearing and answering objections of taxpayers relating to the proposed City of Topeka 2021 operating budget, setting the maximum expenditure limits, and authorizing the publication of the public hearing notice in the Topeka Capital Journal on July 19.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very simple procedural item. We have set July 28 as when we will conduct a public hearing, allowing the public to come and make comments regarding the budget. It is a special meeting, but based on the fact that the August 4 meeting is canceled, we needed to have it at this particular time. We obviously encourage the public to participate and provide us that information, as to where they feel we need to place our funding for various items. So with that, we seek approval.
Motion to approve? We have a motion to approve. We have a second by Councilwoman Nager, discussion on this action item. Seeing no discussion?
Oh, sorry.
Pardon me. Yes, Councilwoman Valdivia Alcala?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to make this comment before we voted on this. I have been receiving a number of emails about the real concern with not only the breaking up of neighborhood relations, but also the money that's being divvied up that, H and D, that has been reduced for the empowerment grants. And I am just stating that any NIA people, any community activist, anybody involved in your neighborhood that has concerns about this, this date upcoming of July 28 is really going to be an important moment for you to speak in public comment. Emails are wonderful, but having your voice heard is crucial as well. So, I'm just saying, everybody keep a close watch on that date, because I will have questions too at that time. So, thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Seeing none, we've had a motion and a second. We now proceed with the vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yeses.
Nine having voted yes, the motion passes. We now move on to the next action item. If the clerk agrees.
So, we have 6A for non-action. We have discussion regarding the Topeka citywide housing market study and strategy.
City manager?
I'm going to keep this short and introduce Bill Feiner to come up and introduce our speaker tonight. Bill?
Thank you, Mr. City Manager. Good evening, governing body. Yeah, I have the honor to introduce our consultant tonight to put a, much of a wrap on this year-long study of housing study and market strategy. We have really been at this over a year now. I've been honored to sit with an internal team that included me, Corey Wright, our Housing Division Director, Dan Warner, and former director Han. And we've really had, engaged our stakeholder or our steering committee as late as this April, when we hit a few bumps in our process getting this out to the public again, but they put their final blessings on it and recommendations together, and we've been honing that message here in the last couple of months. What we really wanted to make sure you, and we got out of this study, is that it's achieving the hopes and the goals that we began with. And many of those hopes were, again, the big impetus here was to understand our affordable housing market, but we also want to understand our overall citywide market as well. So, we did both of those. This is an affordable and market rate study. We also wanted to make sure that we had that gap analysis, which is measuring what we have versus what we need. The gap analysis was definitely performed here, and I think a little bit of why we have that gap. And then lastly, we wanted to, and probably as important as anything, is to understand solutions to those gaps. And that's the strategy part of it. And that's kind of what separates this study from just your normal market study. And it also helps to give us guidance to the review committee for the Affordable Housing Trust, which we hope to move forward on. So with that, with that guidance comes through this study, it came through 150 pages. So, we are, what we want to have tonight is have the consultant distill that into a much more clear and actionable path, so you can understand it. And I'll just, before I introduce them, I'll just let you know, you know, we've already started paying dividends with this. I, myself, have used this over the past couple of months to work with. I had three developers, I added a fourth group today as well, that has been looking, we've been sharing this study, they've been looking at how they can meet those gaps and those needs in our market, and you will be having one of those come forward here very soon, in a nice, significant project, that will meet one of those needs. So, it is already being used, I just wanted you to understand that. We are using it, and it's doing what we had hoped it would do. So without much further ado, we have on the line Justin Carney and Andy Feaster from Development Strategies. They will, again, take it, help to translate that document in more of an executive summary sort of fashion, and walk you through that. So, gentlemen, take it away.
Thank you, Bill. And we're sharing the screen now, great. And thank you, Mayor, and councilmembers. It's nice to see you all, even if it's virtually tonight. Thank you for the time for us to present the conclusion of the study and the strategy. This is not exactly how we wanted to be celebrating the unveiling and kind of the adoption and moving forward of the strategy, but we do appreciate you accommodating us with this, with the virtual presentation. I'm just going to set the stage just a little bit, and then hand it over to Andy to do kind of the nuts and bolts walkthrough, in a very brief fashion. But I just wanted to kind of reset the stage for everyone, because it's been a while since we last spoke, and to talk real briefly about some of the key themes that we took into this process and carried through the entire process. Housing is complex. We all know that. Everyone in this room right now understands, you know, what a multifaceted challenge it is. You know, we're talking about a range of affordability from truly subsidized housing up to market rate housing, existing housing stock and new development, rentals and owner-occupied units. We're talking about investments in neighborhoods, as well as investments in people. All of these, all of these components, you know, play out in our housing ecosystem and in understanding how to provide affordable and market rate housing. And this complexity means a couple, you know, two very important things that I want to start with, and will probably end with here in the next 10 or 12 minutes. There are no silver bullet solutions. You know, this is a complex issue that requires a lot of different players and alignment of a lot of different resources. The other sort of side to that coin is, you know, that the housing strategy that we're putting forward and that we've been working with you over the months to craft is a flexible housing strategy. The idea is that it's, it puts the, it puts a path forward that looks at the issues from different facets, aligns different types of resources and partners into the solution, and then is hopefully flexible to meet new challenges that might arise. I think COVID-19 is a perfect example of challenges kind of coming out of the blue, as well as opportunities that may come from those challenges. So those are some of the key themes. I'm not going to get into the data and analysis and the key findings from 150-page, you know, nine-month market analysis and strategy, but to say, just to highlight a few of our key findings. Again, you know, affordability is definitely a challenge in Topeka. We're talking about nearly a third of Topeka's households are cost burden, housing cost burden. We're talking about housing challenges for renters. We're talking about low-income earners having difficulty finding affordable housing. We're talking about people that are looking to live in Topeka and move into Topeka, that might be high-income earners, having challenges finding the kind of housing in neighborhoods that they're looking for. Housing affordability and neighborhood quality inextricably linked, right? And, you know, as we talk about improving neighborhoods, it improves the housing stock. As we talk about rehabbing and renovating existing stock that positively impacts the neighborhood. Bill mentioned, you know, this is not just an affordable housing strategy, this is a housing strategy across the spectrum of affordability. And really, there's a significant component to that market rate side of things, and this is housing at all levels. Topeka does a very good job with single family, but it's also needing, you know, part of our strategy is looking at other housing types on that market rate, upscale and luxury side, and finding different housing types to suit different needs. And then the last thing on the key findings is really, one thing that we found from the steering committee and all of the stakeholder engagement we did, is there is a very, you know, active and engaged, what we call an ecosystem. A lot of partners are here, but in working and talking with those partners, we understand that there are gaps in service delivery, and who's able to do what, and the capacity that's out there to solve and to chip away at the housing, at the complex housing issues. And so there's a need for more partners working more strategically together. And that's just sort of setting the stage, that those are the kind of the key themes and the key findings, and we have a lot of data and analysis that supports that, and a lot of conversations over the months that support that. And I'm going to hand it over to Andy to kind of get into some of the tangible pieces of that market study.
Thank you, Justin. So we want to quickly review some of our demand conclusions, and these are big numbers, they're over 20 years. They include kind of current pent-up demand and demand to provide an equitable housing stock over time. And that also means, you know, that fewer households are cost burden, that higher-income households are able to buy the home they want, so somebody else can move in to make that middle-priced home. And you see, there's considerable demand for affordable and workforce housing. And we talked about that a lot in the study and in prior presentations. For workforce housing, it's also about supporting the industries that are growing and that you're attracting, and having the housing ready for the workers who might come. And we also kind of segmented out senior housing, because we know that the largest population, the most growth in the next several years is going to be seniors, and there aren't housing options that help seniors kind of move out of a bigger home, downsize, and stay in the community. So, all of this is documented in the report, but there is demand for housing from the existing stock, from new development, that needs to be met to provide an equitable housing to provide an equitable housing stock that helps Topeka grow the way it wants to. We also included six strategies. And within those strategies, 27 different tactics to help improve the existing stock, to expand financial and organizational capacity, help address the abandoned vacant property issues, but also support market rate development. And again, those are detailed in the report. And I want to spend a little bit more time on these priority recommendations. At our last conversation, we were asked to identify three or four things you can work on today. And so we identified, you know, based on our analysis and conversations, these four elements. I know that Fund the Affordable Housing Trust Fund sounds obvious. It's not a tongue-in-cheek recommendation. It's a powerful and flexible tool that is important to find ways to use. And, you know, we also thought a little bit more about, Mayor, you asked us to think about the impacts and ROI of these different programs. There's a lot of research out there about affordable housing trust funds. They leverage a lot of other investment from private sources, from other grants, from other programs. So it's a really powerful tool. In St. Louis, the numbers, I think $12 is raised per dollar of trust fund money. Establish a strategic land bank. We know that improving vacant properties, it's kind of a rising tide for properties around it, property values. Over time, you see people start to invest in their homes where maybe they didn't before because of the conditions that vacant properties contributed to. So we think that's important in stabilizing neighborhoods and helping return some of your vacant properties to productive use and returning them to the tax roll. Expanding the community development ecosystem. You have some really great organizations doing wonderful work. And they're doing as much as they can. And it's pretty impressive what they're able to accomplish. But looking to kind of neighborhood-focused organizations, community development corporations that make long-term neighborhood investments and commitments. There's a lot of success stories nationally, and we think that could be a powerful tool in Topeka's core neighborhood. And finally, you do have some programs underway that have been successful. Weatherization and repair programs. We understand you have some dollars set aside for infill and repair now. Expanding those will go a long ways because there's a return on investment. Part of weatherization's return is a human return. People tend to miss work less and have less, fewer health issues, which provides more wages for them and more stability. It also reduces utility bills by at least 12%. So those are some of the reasons these are priority recommendations that we would recommend you start working on today and in the next few years. And as we also understand you're working through a very challenging crisis with COVID. And some of the justification, I want to spend a little bit of time, more time on the trust fund. So in the study, we did a feasibility analysis where we looked at the cost versus value of different development types. Because frankly, building new in a lot of the city, it costs more than the property's worth today. So there's some subsidies that will be needed to meet, to provide this equitable housing stock. And really, the point here is that the need is greater than the city's funds today. This number, the 6.9 million number, is greater if you include, you know, what Habitat's doing, what Cornerstones is doing, what a lot of the partners in your community, I'm sorry I'm not naming them all, but what they're doing, they're doing great work and that number is higher. But the point is, there's a mismatch and that the trust fund is a really good way to start chipping away. And one of the things we talked a lot, a lot about with Bill and his team is, you know, let's set a goal for the fund. We think 3 million is reasonable for the city to achieve over the next several years. But don't get hung up on not reaching that goal. Starting today with what you're able to starts to support affordable housing units that aren't available today and wouldn't otherwise be produced. So it's focusing on weatherization and renovation and maybe small infill projects, things that have a lot of impact for fewer dollars. And this example here is if in the next year or two, we can raise a total of $500,000 with some city seed funds, moving the infill funds into the trust fund so that they can be leveraged. A lot of people who contribute to trust funds, they need a specific program or specific mission to gravitate towards. So when you're doing an infill project, maybe you can raise some funds for home repair in that same area. So while you have sort underway in one neighborhood, you can have an infill and home repair project underway in another neighborhood so you're able to have more impact. And then incrementally, you know, in the future, you can achieve that $3 million goal. You can have those early success stories and more partners may come aboard because they want to participate in this program. And then this is just kind of, this is an example of incremental impact. The $500,000 a year could impact 25 to $30, or 25 to 30 units a year, which it seems small, but that is, again, adding affordable stock to the market. And that's much needed. You get halfway there, 1.5 million, that's 50 or 60 units a year. And that's a really good chunk of what's needed. And then the ultimate goal really will help you achieve something a lot of communities would love to achieve, which is really reducing that gap of what's available and what's needed in the affordable housing realm.
Yeah. And so what I think, what I hope we've done tonight, and I hope you can appreciate the challenge of distilling all of our analysis and strategy and conversations into a, you know, 10 or 12-minute presentation. And I know we've talked before, you had presented other data. But I think some of the important things to leave you with, and hopefully Andy's demonstration with the feasibility and talking specifically about the Affordable Housing Trust Fund, is that many of your challenges, many of the housing challenges in the city of Topeka really, you know, need just an increment, you know, can take an incremental, you know, an incremental approach. A lot of it is aligning the partnerships that exist and filling in some of the gaps and promoting where those gaps are with additional funding, additional resources, or just leveraging the resources that are there. The last couple of slides here, this one's just reflecting the prioritization. This is a long-term process, right? But we were, you know, we were asked the last time we were in front of you, what do we do now? What should we be focusing on now? And so we've tried to lay this out to reflect some of the new strategies that you aren't doing or could be doing slightly different as well as just expanding the existing efforts you have. I think that Andy touched on that, a really important message. And that is, don't let the numbers and the scale of the issue keep you from just starting. You know, kind of the Nike, the Nike, you know, the Nike logo of just do it, just get started. And even that incremental approach over time, whether it's getting to your goals in three years, five years, or seven years, I think we've hopefully set a roadmap that helps you understand that. Next slide, Andy. And, you know, it's also, and we've talked about it, and I hope you've been contacted by and will continue to work with a lot of the partners that were on the steering committee and those that we engaged with. You know, our constant message throughout to you and to anybody throughout this study is the city cannot do it by itself. And this last slide is really kind of reflective of that and who all of the partners are, how they need to be aligned. And you won't have necessarily all of them aligned from the beginning. Again, the financial piece is incremental, the partnerships are incremental. And I think, you know, hopefully what we've done is provide you with a strategy that is flexible and responsive to new challenges and new opportunities. And then I think the last thing I will say is, you know, we know this is a really challenging time. There is a lot going on in the community dialogue. It is not just COVID, but it's racial equity. It's, you know, there's a lot of conversation that are happening that are, you know, some directly impact how people are able to, you know, buy and rent housing and accumulate wealth and exist in their communities. And you've been, I've sat here for the last hour and a half listening to your conversations that reflect all of that. And so, you know, we just, you know, want to make sure that, you know, that if there's any questions you have about this, you know, now or in the future, that we, again, we've kind of laid out a strategy. One thing we have noticed, and Bill has shared some emails with us, and hopefully you've gotten those same emails, is that there are partners ready to, you know, get engaged and they've been a part of the development of this strategy. They understand their role in the implementation of this strategy. And I think once we get on the other side of this crisis and we start to, you know, see things get back to whatever new normal is and revenue starts flowing, you know, we get on the other side of this crisis, we think this strategy is going to really set the table for some momentum and should serve as a call to action for everybody that wants to move the needle on housing. And I think that's the message that I want to leave you with. And happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for our presenters? I know that before we go to the questions, I'm looking for the individuals who have signed up for public comment. And I would like to make sure that they get an opportunity to speak first before we start getting deep into our conversation. The first person signed up to speak is Olga Hennessy.
Good evening. My name is Olga Hennessy from Tecumseh United Methodist Church. I am a member of Topeka Jump. I'm here today to speak on finally addressing Topeka's systemic housing crisis. If there were a problem for a family here and there, I would expect individuals to fight their housing challenges on their own. But since so many individuals and families across Topeka are impacted, this is clearly a systemic problem. It is for that reason that for five years, Jump has been calling on this governing body to get involved, to do something different above and beyond so that we can expect different results, real transformation for central, east, and north Topeka. Now, this housing study gives you the data and the tools you need to make policy changes that strengthen Topeka's affordable housing ecosystem. With the financial impact of COVID-19 to the city budget, this governing body may be tempted to prioritize strategies that do not cost money. While we agree those are the low-hanging fruits, Jump is challenging you not to take the easy way out. Do what you've asked your staff to do on occasion, get creative. Imagine a Topeka where all of us can live in vibrant, thriving communities. Housing is the key that opens the door to the American promise of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. Housing is the firm foundation on which our lives are built. Housing is an anchor to pursue in our dreams. Having a place to call home is the anchor to quality education, access to health and mental health that gives us peace and rest. There is no place like home. Funding the Housing Trust Fund is the tool that unlocks every strategies and priorities in the study. That is why it is listed first, as you heard tonight. Perhaps you put initial allocation in, perhaps your initial allocation in there this year is a seed, and then you make an application to the Spark Committee for $5 million to put in the Housing Trust Fund. Since we've been at this for five years, I can imagine I sound like Charlie Brown. Wah 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 wah. So I'm going to reclaim your attention right here because what I'm about to say is something to be discussed and acted on. So listen. Perhaps you put initial allocation in the trust fund this year, a seed, and then you make an application to the Spark Committee for $5 million to be put in the Housing Trust Fund to support at least four different COVID-19-related housing issues. The money could support families on the brink of homelessness due to impending evictions or foreclosures. Another way to use such funds would be the construction of new units to close the gap of housing available to the lowest incomes. We know the pandemic has grown the number of families in that low-income category due to job loss or working less hours. Another COVID-19 use of funds would be for those who have physical disabilities due to the virus needing home rehab for ADA accessibility. Finally, a fourth COVID-19 use of the funds would be more weatherization, application so that if we find ourselves yet in another stay-at-home order, people can shelter in place more safely this winter. Affordable housing may be considered an eligible expense for relief dollars if a strong case is made by city staff. COVID-19 relief funds have been spent in other counties and states on affordable housing programs and developments. Spark Committee members in this July 1st meeting urge applicants to think outside the box. Providing adequate housing across the entire spectrum from people on a fixed income to senior corporate executives is the cornerstone.
And do you need additional time? I think that that's the bell that states that your time has expired.
Yes, could I have three more minutes, please?
We have a motion.
Motion to extend by three minutes.
Motion by Councilwoman Nager, and I guess a second by Councilwoman Valdivia Aldala. All those in favor? If there's no comments or question, we proceed with the vote.
Mayor De La Isla?
This is for three minutes.
Yes. Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes. Thank you. Providing adequate housing across the entire spectrum from people on fixed income to senior corporate executives is the cornerstone to successful economic development. Addressing our housing gap is a critical component to the medical and social response to the devastation of COVID-19. You have an incredible opportunity in adopting and immediately starting implementation of this housing study. Jump is not just one small voice or segment of Topeka. Jump is Topeka. I hope as I get ready to leave this podium that you consider my comments to represent over 7,000 households. Of the 7,000, we are able to organize active participation from 1,300 people regularly. Visit our website, topekajump.com, and you can see 1,300 names scrolling of the people who support the comments I've made this evening. You will find a list of 29 faith communities across this county that are due-paying members of Jump. Even during this pandemic, we grew by four congregations because people want our officials to recognize social justice can no longer be at the bottom of the totem pole. Yes, four New York congregations joined the ranks recently. First Congregational, New Life Baptist Church, Susanna Wesley United Methodist, and Fellowship Bible Church. We are not one voice. We are the voice of many, many constituents across this community. So one more time for good measures, adopt the housing study. Immediately start implementation. Put initial allocation of something in the trust fund and make an application to the Spark Committee for $5 million for the Housing Trust Fund. I listed four COVID-19-related things that money can be spent on. I've watched other counties and states do it. Do not let Topeka be behind the eight ball. Stand for questions.
Thank you so much for your comments. We now have Stephen Vogel. Is the next person signed up to speak?
Good evening. My name's Steve Vogel. I'm the president of the Shawnee County Landlords Association. When we met with Justin Carney from Development Strategies, we were part of the landlord and property manager stakeholder group. There were five of us in attendance. We were unanimous in our opposition to any new regulations for landlords. We simply didn't think they would do any good. Someone else must have been much more persuasive than us. Following are some of the things that were recommended in the housing study. On page 79, quote, "A change in the Kansas state law to allow for interior inspections without tenant consent can aid the city of Topeka to implement an effective licensing system." I have here an article from Seattle that had a similar proposition in 2018 that was, there was a lawsuit that defeated this proposal. On page 80, uses Lawrence as an example of a city with licensing and inspection programs. This is despite the many problems that Lawrence has had. And I also have an article right here. This is from May of this year and the myriad of problems that they've had with their program. They provide examples of cities with licensing and inspection programs. Also, they cite examples of cities with other programs such as land banks, affordable housing trust funds, neighborhood development partnerships, and others. trust funds, neighborhood development partnerships, and others, with little to no evidence of the effectiveness of these programs. They state that Topeka has the 58th highest eviction rate in the country. This is the justification for advocating licensing, registration, and inspections for landlords. They say this... This is part of the solution for these problems. I looked at the same study that has Topeka ranked number 58 for evictions. It is from Eviction Labs. I researched the first two pages that had the 38 cities with the highest eviction rates in the country. Eighteen of the top 38 and eight of the top 10 cities with the highest eviction rates have mandatory rental inspection programs. And then this is that eviction lab document. This is hardly evidence that these programs are helpful. It makes me question the seriousness that was given the research that led to these recommendations. It also makes me wonder what stakeholders in Topeka are pushing for these programs and what is their motivation. It is very ironic that this study has recommendations for rental inspections without tenant consent at the same time the city council is looking at banning no-knock warrants by the police. I think these inspections could be called a no-warrant knock. Regarding evictions, I don't know any landlords and have never heard of any landlords that enter into a lease agreement with the goal of evicting them. An eviction is a failure on the part of the tenant and the landlord. You show me a landlord with a lot of evictions, and I will show you a landlord that probably doesn't run their business very well. By far, the best strategy for avoiding evictions is to properly screen your tenants. If you have an applicant with a bad rental history, bad credit report, unstable employment history, the best thing is not to rent to them. Where are they going to live? Who will rent to them? Would you rent to them? Do you think they may be a large part of the population that is having trouble finding and affording affordable housing? These are the things we should be talking about. I'd like to request an extension.
How much time do you need, sir?
Pardon me?
How much extra time do you need? One minute, two minutes?
I think two minutes would be more than enough. I've got one more paragraph.
Could we make an extension? Do we have a motion for an extension? Councilwoman Hiller makes a motion, and then Councilwoman Ortiz seconds. All those, we proceed by voting.
Mayor De La Isla?
Yes.
Councilmembers Hiller?
Yes.
Valdivia Akla?
Yes.
Ortiz?
Yes.
Padilla?
Yes.
Nager?
Yes.
Dobler?
Yes.
Duncan?
Yes.
And Lesser?
Yes.
We have nine yes.
Sir, you have two more minutes. You may proceed.
Thank you. When I was on the Affordable Housing Task Force, one of the participants made the comment that bad landlords and bad tenants have a way of finding each other. I think there is an unspoken agreement where the landlord says, "As long as you pay the rent, we're okay. You can stay there, and I am not going to fix everything. You tear up on my property, and we'll ignore things such as criminal activity, being a bad neighbor, et cetera." If you really clamp down on this problem, where do you think these people will live? Where do you think they should live? Would you rent to them? Don't you think that we should have a conversation about it? That's all I have, unless there's any questions for me.
Comment?
Councilwoman Duncan, yes.
So, there's obviously a lot in this study, and I think if we accomplish some of these goals, I don't think there's any dispute that it helps everybody in the sense that even property owners who are landlords, it helps those communities they're trying to market to, it helps property values. And I actually had a call with Jump last week. Time is running together in these COVID days. And I said, I'm gonna tell you something, I said something to them, and it's sort of a challenge, is that some of the points you made are good, and there's a lot of... To my perspective, there's a lot of good stuff in here. There are also some things, kind of like you, I have some issues with. But it's easy to stand up here, and I'm not personally, it's personal to you in general, to say, "We don't like that," because I agree with you on some of them. But we need your help, you landlords in this community, to provide us some alternative solutions and suggestions and some paths. As you know where we're trying to get to, we can't do this alone, and I certainly, as a legislative body, don't want to put things upon you that you are going to fight against and don't like and that do harm to you. But we had to meet in the middle somewhere. And so I guess my challenge and my offer is, I want to be involved in those conversations with you as a city councilperson, and work with your groups and others to say, "Great, you don't like landlord licensing, but you understand what we're trying to accomplish. How can we... What can you come up with to help us get us there?" Because I think then we can work together to accomplish some of these goals instead of this constant, "No, yes, no, yes," back and forth. So that's my comment to you. I'm here to have those conversations. I look forward to having with them. And just the challenge I'm making to all of our community partners is, let's come up with some of those ideas together instead of us having to say, "Please do this or else." And that's where I'd like to go. So thank you for your comments to that.
Yeah.
At this...
Yeah, yeah. If I could comment on that, I share your views. We actually have started our own Affordable Housing Task Force on the Shawnee County Landlords Association, and I actually have some ideas, because we want the same things. We are not against any of the things as far as providing affordable housing. I just think it needs to be very clear what the challenges are, particularly in these areas with high poverty rates. I mean, it's a real challenge being a landlord there, and I think we need to encourage people to... Good people to become landlords. And if anybody is around me very long, they're gonna hear me say that I think, like all businesses, landlords operate in a business environment. And what is that business environment? And we need to make that more welcoming, not less welcoming. I have no tolerance for landlords that abuse their tenants. I'm all for clamping down on them. It's just, I think, for example, like this inspections, right now, Topeka has a complaint-based housing inspection program, which I think, I think that's the way to go. It's very targeted. I just don't see why that, why that needs to be changed.
I would weigh in here for a second. The complaint-based approach does not work, and the reason that it does not work is because not everybody happens to be a good landlord, and it puts the residents in a position in which they will not, especially those families that are socio-economically disadvantaged, not report anything because of fear of retaliation and of being let go of their homes. So there obviously is a system that is not working, and I know that the solutions are not perfect. I will defer to Councilwoman Valdivia Altala.
Thank you, Mayor. Sir, I would just say that I have a tendency to agree with Spencer in that, you know, I think dialogue is important with landlords. I will say that I think, as I heard your first commentary, which to me seemed very anti-tenant in some ways, to the additional commentary that's happening now, which seems like more willing to work together, you know, I am definitely down with, or open to having a dialogue. As a single mother for 12 years that worked two jobs and raised one daughter without any child support, I, not towards you, but I take deep offense to people or landlords that were always so... And I had good landlords a majority of the time, but that wanted that money when they wanted and weren't willing to work, even if it was, you know, a little bit behind. Because I did run into that as a single mother. I think until we have walked in the shoes of the socially-economic disadvantage, that we don't have any idea what they go through. I can only say that I experienced it for 12 years period of time, and I hope never to go back to that. I think that there are bad tenants. I think that there are. They don't care about the property that they live on, and they're gonna destroy it, and they're gonna decimate it or whatever. But for the most part, as having been a civil rights investigator in housing for a time, I've also seen, and I've also heard through NIAs, that there's a lot of bad landlords, too. So somewhere, we have to come and meet in the middle with this. I am open for further dialogue on this, but it's never as easy as one size, as one side likes to maybe think it may be. I understand I probably have biases from what I went through. You have your own biases. Maybe somewhere, we can meet in the middle. So thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Could I respond?
Thank you, Councilwoman Valdivia Altala. So at this point in time, we typically don't do back and forth with individuals in public comment. I think that's what our attorney was kind of getting ready to flag me for.
Actually, Mayor, on this type of agenda item, there can be a little bit back and forth. It's the public comment period.
Oh, there can be? Okay. I just wanted to make sure that I followed protocol.
Absolutely.
If I could, I'll try to be brief. I'll address Mayor De La Isla's comments first on the idea of the complaint-based system not working right now. This is one of the things that I have thought about, is I understand that many tenants can be intimidated. They have a landlord that they fear is going to retaliate them. I think groups like HCCI and others could aid in what I would call a hand-holding process through that, because any... Again, I have no tolerance for landlords who are abusive to tenants, but if they could hold their hand through that process and make sure that they weren't abused, that would be a win-win for everyone. In regard, in regard to your comments, I don't doubt for one second that that goes on. I'm not going to defend that. Many of the landlords, if not most of the landlords that I know, are tolerant of people if they have a problem, you know, paying the rent, their current rent. They are willing to work with them, but not all are. The landlords are a very diverse group. So I can't speak for them. I'm not going to deny for one second that that kind of stuff goes on. I just don't think that additional regulations are going to do anything to solve that. I guess that's, that's my point. But I do, I'm for advocating for affordable housing. I'd like to be, I definitely would like to be part of that discussion. So, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments, sir. We so appreciate you.
Okay, thank you.
The only remark that I will say, because I'm a believer that says, and it's not that I want to belabor the conversation, but I would like to extend an invitation to you, sir. I am, sir, and by your, some of your remarks, that it seems like you have a heart for people, and that you are interested in having a positive conversation. I would like to invite you to participate at some point in time in the docket, in which individuals go when they are dealing with tenant landlord matters. Housing and credit counseling is an extremely amazing resource in our community that does provide our families with some help, but they don't provide legal advice. That is something that they cannot absolutely do, which means that at the time in which a tenant shows up at the court, they typically show up on their own without any representation. And I would, I would highly encourage you, sir, for you to maybe visit that docket and just sit down and just watch what happens. I know that sometimes individuals that are really working with individuals don't see the other side of what's happening, and one of the things that I always talk about is that it's one thing for us to talk about policies, but it's another one for us to help change hearts, and I think that that would be a very edifying experience for you. But thank you so much for participating today, and I so appreciate your comments.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Comments from the body at this point in time? Councilwoman Valdivia Altala?
Thank you, Mayor. The people that put together the housing study, I just want to say, like, thank you for the hard work. This is originally, and I have shared this with a number of folks in communities, the original document, which is like 146 pages long, and have shared this with NIAs, with a number of other community organizations. And one thing I want to say is this: I know that we have to condense information into small packets, right, as we get ready to approve it. But I keep thinking over and over, what we're looking at is intersectionality tonight. Intersectionality, because we talked about it being Minority Health Month, and we are talking also about race and police issues, and now we have come to what has been left out of these small number of pages, but, which is in the 146-page document, which I recommend folks pull up, because what we need to be addressing, we should be addressing in this meeting tonight, is race and equity as well. Because they did a good job, the folks that did our study did a good job, and I just want to read briefly one sentence that they say, "Minorities and low-income households are more likely to be concentrated in areas with poor housing conditions. Some of those poor housing conditions in our core neighborhood are still a result of redlining." And for those of you who don't know what redlining is, it was the systematic encouragement of divestment in certain areas, and from lending for homes or lending for renovation to folks of color. And it usually impacted Black families more. So that we have a number of areas in our core neighborhoods that are still suffering the effects of redlining, which has been outlawed, I don't think it's been a generation, but maybe a generation. I'm not sure. What we have to look at also is the disproportionate amount of the unemployment rate and the median household income. Let me just tell you from the study, it says the median household income for African-American households in Topeka is $30,500. It's approximately 2/3 of the citywide median income, median income, which is $46,100. The study itself states, "This has broad implications regarding housing affordability and the need for equitable housing strategies." It talks also about rent, rental properties. More than 2/3 of African-American households and half of all Latino households in the city of Topeka rent a home. This is higher than the citywide percentage for renter-occupied housing, 43%. Thus, providing access to quality rental housing options is very, very important. Let's look at the rate of unemployment. The African-American percentage is about, some people say 10%, but study says 10.6% to 11%. White house, white population, 75%. Latino population, 16%. If you look at the rate of unemployment for African-American households, 10.1%, double the rate being experienced among white households. When you look at the amount, the cost of what it takes to rent a two-bedroom unit that is safe and decent, the hourly wage that needs to be earned for workers is $16 an hour. We have city workers here that have a starting wage of a little over $11 an hour. How can people afford that? It costs about $785 a month to rent a two-bedroom, safe and decent quality home, and that includes utilities. So I think what we're looking at here is, not only are we looking at a race and equity issue, we are also looking at, Topeka does not have a sustainable living wage for many of these very folks that can't afford the housing that we're hoping to be able to find money to provide for them, that opportunity to rent or to buy. I think that we also need to make sure, because I've heard the words, "Let's go and fix up this, this part of this core neighborhood," or, you know, "Part of this core neighborhood" so that people can move into it, that can afford it. The other thing that we have to be very careful of is gentrification, is pushing people out that historically have lived in a neighborhood that can no longer live there because they have been out-rented or out-priced from the area that they live in. So while I am so appreciative of this report, and I think that we definitely need to give money to the housing fund, I think we really need to encourage people to read this 146-page report, because it has been left out, and I would also just keep mentioning the word, the word intersectionality. So thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Additional comments or questions for the presenters? Councilwoman Duncan?
Well, I wanted to thank staff and everyone who worked on this study for one thing. When this first came out, there were some benchmarks built into it, but they weren't quite... quite, I mean, solid benchmarks in some level. One of the questions I had when we had some other meetings was, we talk about a trust fund, but if we don't have something to shoot for in terms of a minimum to a maximum that gets that process started, we're kind of just spinning our wheels. And same with the timeline and prioritizing what we can actually accomplish within a year or two versus what's a five-to-six-year project to get us there. That kind of wasn't there originally. And that was, I know myself and I think a few other councilmembers sort of tasked everybody with, okay, this is all great, but we need some tangible, realistic benchmarks to get us moving forward on this, or else it just becomes another study that we put in a drawer and we never got that done. So I just want to say thank you to all, to that extra next level of work that went into this, because I think it's what helps take some of this information from just information to getting us a little bit closer to knowing where to start and what we're trying to reach for. So I appreciate that extra work by, by everyone.
Councilwoman Nager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I want to thank you guys for putting together this work. It's been immensely helpful. And I know that particularly with Mr. Byander's department, they're really taking it to heart. And it's something that we want to implement across the board to make sure that we do have those housing options across the spectrum available in Topeka. I think it's also very fruitful for us to really push home the point that this can be done in incremental steps. It can be really daunting to see all of this information and think, where do you even start? So to have those goals for us and to also realize that we're in a very difficult spot, not only with just the housing situation, but the fact that we are going through a global pandemic, and there's plenty of other things happening in everyone's lives. And so just, I really want to echo what you were saying. We need to start somewhere, and by putting those small incremental steps into place, we can start to build towards a more equitable tomorrow. So thank you very much for all that work. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Hiller, I am, the camera's looking at you. I didn't see you raise your hand. Did you have a comment or question?
I did. I did. Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry.
This is huge, and most, many people know anyway, that affordable housing in neighborhoods has been sort of my lifetime. So it's really exciting to see all of the data as well as all the suggestions. And I really want to put a shout out particularly to our speakers and between them, JUMP, for making this a priority and pushing this and, and continuing to stay with it and mature the message with it as well, I would say. And along that lines, from what you said tonight, I've been asking about whether we could use the COVID, various COVID monies for affordable housing. I've been told, no, it wasn't possible. So I, if you are seeing examples, hopefully you've already spoken to various staff and the city manager, because the time is right now for us to bid on that money. And I totally agree with you that if it's out there and there's a way to do it, we ought to get it in here and not miss, miss this big opportunity. They don't come on that often. I also want to speak to Steve Vogel's words as well. We have a wonderful group of landlords in this town, and many people either by, by choice or by the circumstances that they're in are going to be renters, and we need good landlords so that they can provide that housing and the services that go with it and do it right. And so appreciate that. I'm hopeful that the reason we have higher numbers of evictions in this town is because we have a habit, for instance, of doing it right rather than just pushing people out and doing constructive evictions on the street, the kinds of things that do happen in other communities. We've worked on that for a long time, and Topeka is, is better than many. Many, many thoughts and comments that we've had along the way and that I have as I look at this today, I will make two right now. I have read through the resolution that was proposed for us for next week regarding this. And I wonder if maybe some of us would be more comfortable if that, if that acceptance of the study and declaring that we want to move ahead with it was a little more targeted. Right now, that statement just says, yep, we adopt the whole thing and everything it says, and we want to go forward 100% with all of it. And I'm, I'm not sure, the example of licensing, for instance, if, if everybody really supports that. And I, I don't want any of us to feel like we got caught up in advocating something we had some questions about. And I wonder, it's very clear, for instance, that going forward with the trust fund is a great first step, and there's some specific ideas for it from the city manager as well. And that maybe all of us might, might think about targeting what we say in that, in that resolution next week a little bit. And second, we are really at, at an incredible time right now. And so this affordable housing initiative and all the things that can be done in it are so exciting. I do think we've, we've been through some history. We've been, Housing Community Development Act was passed in 1976. We've been actively working on this in this community for a long time, and we've learned a lot of things. For instance, in the early years that we did the community development block grant money, it was scattered site. You know, it was, if somebody had a home, there was a rental rehab program, there was homeowner rehab programs. And frankly, from my experience working in that, no, you couldn't drive down and go, oh, there's a block that they put money into. But if you knew, every one of those investments made a difference. It was like the reverse broken window. There was somebody that had fixed up their house or a house on a block, and those positive things spilled out. And so I think we really do need to look at, at how we would target. The affordable housing thing, I think it's going to take care of itself, but it's time for us to look again at how we're doing those wraparound programs, the neighborhood revitalization as well. And I think our neighborhoods are ready to do that. The staff has made, done some things that have really sparked a lot of conversation, too, but looking at how our code, code enforcement is done, how our CDBG is done. Councilwoman Alcala mentioned, you know, race and culture initiatives. We, a lot of our neighborhoods, to support this affordable housing that we're talking about, we need to do some beautification and cleanup in those neighborhoods so that they, so people want to live there and so that they increase in value. We want to, I would argue that we need to look again, and Chief and I have talked about our community policing. Our at-risk neighborhoods need some body to go to that's there. I personally had two murders, or two murder situations, and three people died just last night. And I have great neighborhoods and great people, and I don't want that kind of thing, if it could be prevented, to happen. So I, I hope that, that we can work, maybe through planning and, and through our community, our citizens advisory committee, to, to make sure that we've got the wraparound programming and planning in place to, to take care of this affordable housing initiative as well. I think we can do it. I think we can do it all, and, and they'll feed on one another. So more later, but thank you.
All right. So this is an item that is not an action item this evening.
With Mayor.
And if there's no other comments on this item, typically, oh, Councilman Duncan, you're the only thing between us and a break.
I understand. Not the first time, not the last time. Well, I guess mine is, is an extension of what Councilmember Hiller said. And I guess mine will be, I know this is an action tonight, but I guess I'll put this out there. Accepting this and adopting it is great, but I'm not sure that it's realistic, feasible, or even fair as a governing body to simply adopt it and then look at staff and say, now you make it happen. I just don't know that that keeps momentum going. They, I don't know if you know this, they got a lot of other things they're dealing with on a regular basis. They obviously need to be an integral part of, of this. But the reality is, at the end of the day, there are things in here that will require significant policy changes, adjustments, alterations, and what. So I guess what I'm either putting out there for the body for consideration, and I won't throw anyone under the bus, I will say that I am more than happy to, to take the reins or be a part of that, is, do we need to develop some sort of council subcommittee to help shepherd this along, watch it, do, do some of that work to make sure we move forward? I mean, is that something this body is interested in beyond just assigning it to staff? You know, how would that look? As I've never made that recommendation in the six months I've been here, so I don't even know what the heck that looks like. But I mean, I just feel like it needs some of us who may be willing to take some of that on to help with that process as opposed to just putting it on staff alone, if we actually want to get to where we're trying to head with some of it. So that, I will throw that out there as, I guess, a recommendation for either a future action as opposed to just adopting something next week that says we accept it.
Thank you, Councilman Duncan. And the way that you do it is the same way that you just did. I'm excited that you have proposed this and would love to see this start moving forward. Additional comments or questions? Councilwoman Valdivia Alta.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilman Spencer, I will help in any way I can. So count me in.
Well, I guess next week when we adopt it, I will talk with staff, we'll make that a motion, and we'll make it happen. There we go. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Okay.
I'll keep it real short, but I will throw in on that, that with all the discussions about, at the community, at the Citizens Advisory Council, community, whatever they are, CAC level, I think there's a lot of interest in that, that the neighborhood leaders, I have said to one of my, to one of my neighbors last night, in fact, that was hotly talking about all these things that are moving parts, I said, you know, I think if you all wanted to meet together and the, the council members that represent the districts with the low-income neighborhoods especially, I said, I'd have to check, but I think every one of us would be happy to sit with you and maybe others to jointly work on this. And again, that could be a piece, too. Thank you.
City Manager.
Yeah, based on this conversation, though, I do have one question, and that is, do we want this policy approval or the action item to approve the resolution? Do you want that on the agenda next week as an action item, or do we need to delay that? You know, I just, I just want to make sure, because it is approving, as it's designed to basically resolve that the governing body, that the findings, recommendations, and stat, strategies identified are adopted. And so I think, I don't know that there's any of them that anyone is objecting to at this point, but I do hear that there are certain ones that maybe want more emphasis. So if we're okay with approving it, we'll leave it on the agenda for the next week. But I just want to confirm that, that we're going down that path, or if we need to modify, would we bring it back for?
And I would not speak for Councilman Duncan, but I think that the, the emphasis of establishing the committee would be to start assigning those priorities and how to move forward. Councilman Duncan, is that correct?
Yeah, I would say that that's correct. And I think that even if, I mean, personally, even if I have, as I've looked through this, while I agree with a lot of it, I may have, as I mentioned earlier, one or two things. Some of those are still going to have to come before this body for policy approval eventually. So I think even if we adopt them now as a body and saying that's what we want to work towards, some of those are still going to have to come back here eventually to get approval by this body, whether we adopt it as a, the report as a whole today anyway. That'd be my perspective on it.
I agree.
All right. Additional comments or questions? I just want to echo my appreciation to the team. Justin, we had some long conversations on how to present this, and I am so grateful for all the work that you guys have done. And just, and Andy, the same thing. Thank you. So with that, in appreciation for everybody that has participated in this very important conversation, it is 8:23, and it is the custom of the body to take a 10-minute break around 8 o'clock. So we are going to recess into a 10-minute break.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.